Or tell me it's live.
You're live.
Okay, thank you. Hey, it's good to see everybody today. I appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to meet with us. Today on the work session, we have three items. Really, the bulk is dedicated to the finance audit, and then wanted to give time to ask any questions that you may have regarding updates to COVID-19. Also, I have that on the agenda for the board meeting, so if you'd prefer to just cover it at that point, I'd gladly do that. And then I just want to remind you of a couple of dates coming up. We do, we are off this Wednesday on for Thanksgiving break, and then we don't have a work session in December. So we'll actually have a short work session in December, right before the December 14th board meeting. So that's the only time we'll be meeting in December. And then winter break is the 21st through January 1st. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and get Jason to introduce our auditor, and he'll be covering the review that he conducted this year for us.
Yeah, so I've invited Tammy Taylor from my office. She's worked a lot with Ryan in his office with this audit. Ryan's actually listed on here as Luke. He had to get a different computer that would work. He's going to go through our audit. If you have any questions for him, please feel free to stop him and ask him, or you can ask Tammy or myself.
Hey, everybody. I'm Ryan Lasky. I'm with Summers, Craig, and Sparks. I think this is the second year in a row, maybe third year in a row we've done the audit. What I'd like to do, I think everybody has a copy of the audit with them. I'm going to go through and hit some highlights. First thing I'd like to do is thank Superintendent Moore and Jason and Tammy for helping us get the audit done. Didn't have any issues getting it done this year. Before I get into it, there is one thing I want to remind everybody or notify everybody of. The federal government is supposed to be issuing final guidance on specifically COVID-19 or CARES funding, and it was supposed to come out on...
Can you hear you, Ryan?
No?
Now I can.
Okay. Oh, well, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So KDE has extended the due date to December 15th on all school board audits that received CARES money before June 30th of 2020. So because of that, this audit, as far as we're considered, is final. But once the federal government comes out with the final regulations regarding CARES funding, there may be some updates to it. We're hoping it's just a coverage change, and it's no additional work that needs to be performed. But there is a possibility that additional work may need to be performed. So...
If you guys haven't located the item yet, it's G3 in our documents.
So we're going to present this audit as is, and we don't believe there, there should not be any changes to any figures in the audit. It would just be disclosures that would change. So what I'd like to do is start on pages one and two of the audit. This is your auditor's report. It's an unmodified opinion, which means it's a clean opinion. One thing that I'd like you to do on page two, there's an emphasis on matter paragraph, which we typically don't have. But this year, there was a significant change to your audit. You were forced to adopt GASB 84, which is accounting for fiduciary funds. And what that did was we had to record your school activity funds inside your general fund financials. That's never been done before. It's usually a separate report in the back of the audit. Pages three through nine are what's known as...
Ryan, can you explain again why the activity funds are included this year?
I'm actually going to touch on it again.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Pages three through nine is what's known as Management's Discussion Analysis. What this is, this is the school board summary of the audit report. And they, and it's required to be in the audit. And what's nice about it is it compares your June 30, 2020 figures to your June 30, 2019 figures. So what I would like to do is actually review the Management's Discussion Analysis, so you can see kind of comparative. So starting on page five, you'll see your net positions as of June 30, 2020 and 2019. Your total assets decreased a little more than $2.6 million compared to the prior year. This large decrease was due to a decrease in investments. You didn't have a significant increase in capital assets, but it didn't outweigh the decrease in the investment. So you did have a decrease of a little more than $2.6 million. Your deferred outflows increased $2.2 million, and that's related to pension and OPEB. Your total liabilities decreased $4.3 million, and that is due to a decrease in your bonds payable. Your deferred inflows increased a little more than $3 million. And again, that's related to your pension and OPEB, and we'll touch on that later. Overall, your net position did increase $828,000. On page six, we'll see your summary of revenue and expenses. For governmental funds, your total revenue decreased $18.5 million compared to the prior year, and that was due to a decrease in state revenue. Your total expenses decreased $17.4 million. And that was primarily due to a decrease in instruction expenses. With regards to the business-type activity, your total revenues went down $192,000, and that was due to a decrease in local revenue. And your total expenses went down $353,000, and that was due to a decrease in food service materials and supplies. Pages seven and eight are what's known as fund-wide financial statements. And I should have clarified this. What we just went over is known as government-wide financials. They're more of an accrual basis. You book your debt as actual debt and not as revenue, and you book your fixed assets as fixed assets and not actual expenses. Pages seven and eight are what's known as fund-wide financials. This is done on the basis of accounting that you knew your budgeting are, so these are probably a little bit more familiar to you. On page seven, you'll have your June 30, 2020 numbers, and page eight's your 2019 numbers. For general fund, your general fund revenue increased $2.8 million. And that was due to an increase in property taxes and state funding. And your general fund expenses increased $4.4 million, and that was due to an increase in pretty much all expenses across the board and capital outlay. Most likely, those expenses increased due to pension and OPEB liabilities. Your special revenue, your revenue for your special revenue fund went down $452,000. And again, that was due to a decrease in state and federal grants. And your total expenses decreased $333,000, and that was due to a decrease in instructional staff and business expenses. Then you'll see your food service. Your food service went down $56,000. That was due to a decrease in lunchroom sales, most likely from not being there during April and May. And then your total expenses went down $386,000, and that was due to decreases in pretty much all expenses except for employee benefits. Your daycare funds, again, they were affected by COVID. They went down $157,000. Your expenses actually about stayed the same compared to last year. So that's, that's it for the actual numbers. What I'd like to do now is go through some notes that support those figures. Pages 21 through 61 are the notes to the financial statements. But what I'd like to do is look at page 32 first. On page 32, you're going to see a summary of the new accounting guidelines that you had to adopt or will have to in the future. They're a little out of order. So starting with statement number 84, which is the second paragraph. That's the fiduciary activities. That's what Denise was asking about. So effective for years beginning after December 15th of 2019, all school boards had to... Well, KDE, it was pushed back because of COVID, but KDE is still recommending for the year ending June 30, 2020, that all school boards adopt this accounting pronouncement. And basically, what this accounting pronouncement is making you do is grab all of the student activity funds that used to be reported as a supplementary schedule, and they're recording those in your, your general operations, in your general fund. Now, what that's doing, well, the reason for that is they, they have determined that you have fiduciary responsibility because a school board member has to sign the checks to actually physically write that money. It is not truly completely separate money from the school board. There is some oversight that the board has on those funds. So because of that, they're required to be recorded in the financials starting this year. Statement number 88, certain disclosures related to debt. This is applicable, but it didn't affect the board any. So that's just something that may have to come into play in future years. Those are the only two things that were effective for this year. Going back up to GASB 87, leases. This is something that now has been pushed back two years, beginning after June 15th of 2021. And starting then, what's going to happen is anything that the board leases, and Jason will probably provide more info on what that is if you have any questions, is going to have to be recorded as a debt and a fixed asset. And as the debt gets paid down, the asset will get depreciated, and that's how it will be accounted for. But one thing to keep in mind is when you're looking at your bonding or when you're applying to get bonds, any covenants you may have, this may throw those covenants way out of whack because your debt will go up considerable amount if, if you have significant leases. And so the other one that's coming down the pike, which I wasn't familiar with until just last week.
Hey, Jason, can you speak to the leases that we have?
We've just got postage leases that the schools have. It's not very, not a very high dollar amount. We don't do copier leases. We don't do technology leases like some of the schools do or other districts. I can't hear you, Denise.
Did you say postage? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so our mailing, our mailing machines at the school, those are the only leases that we currently have. We do technically lease the enterprise vehicles. We buy them outright except for a dollar, so we have a dollar lease on those. I don't think those will qualify since we purchase them pretty much outright. So it's really just going to be a small dollar amount for us.
Yeah, and if it's just postage machines, I could see us not really worrying about it. I mean, you're talking, I don't know how many you have, but usually those things are like $150 every full month or every three months or something like that. So that's not going to be a significant impact. The other thing is GASB issue number 96, and this is going to be for years beginning after June 15th, 2022, which would be your June 30, 2023. And this is going to be requiring subscription-based information, technology arrangements, to be recorded as an intangible asset. So if you guys have, and I'm sure you do, especially with like online learning or anything like that, you may be signed up for a long-term subscription to use that service. That's going to be required, I mean, we're talking four years, three years from now, but that'll be required to be recorded as an asset. So those are the updates to new accounting pronouncements. What I'd like to do is go to page 34. On page 34, you'll see your schedule of capital assets. You can see the activity for the year. The most significant activity for the year was in your construction progress. $24 million was capitalized in construction progress, and $5.3 million was moved out of it and moved down into borrowings and improvements. Jason can elaborate on what projects that entails.
Yeah, so the $5.3 million is the diesel mechanics that was finalizing that renovation. And then the $24 million is the CTE and Providence renovations.
On page 36, you'll see your long-term debt. As of June 30, 2020, the board has $111 million in bonds payable. And you can see the schedule at the bottom of that. That's your payment schedule. So as of 2040, those will be, they are scheduled to be fully paid off. Page 41 starts our retirement plan notes. As of June 30, 2020, the district had a proportionate share of CERS pension liability of $31,301,620. And that's up from the prior year. Last year was $26,866,000. So it's gone up about $4.5 million since last year. Page 50 is your OPEB liability, which is your post-employment benefit plans. On page 50, that's not correct. I'm sorry, page 47. Page 47, the second paragraph. It notes that as of June 30, 2020, CERS had post-employment benefit liability of $7,483,959, which, what is different about this year is that actually went down compared to last year. So they're making some headway on it. Last year was $7,800,000, so it went down about $400,000, $350,000. Page 52 is your KTRS post-employment benefit liability. As of June 30, 2020, the district's liability was $17,297,000, which again, this went down. Last year was $19,371,000. So that's gone down about $2 million. Page 61. As part of bringing in the district activity funds, we had to record their beginning balance, so the June 30, 19 ending balance of those activity funds, as a prior period adjustment in this audit. So on page 61, it outlines that we recorded $380,335 as a prior period adjustment. And that was just to get the activity funds onto the general fund financials as a starting point. Pages 62 through 70 is required supplementary information. All these schedules support the retirement and OPEB liabilities. They are taken out of an actuary report that the state provides. Pages 71 through 72. I just want to bring your attention to this. This is your, what's known as non-major governmental funds. And you can see the second column on that page is your student activity funds. It's the first year it's been showing on here. Page 71 is the balance sheet of that fund. And page 72, you'll find basically the profit and loss for that fund. You can see during the year, that fund increased $41,001.
And so on page 72, the student activity fund, I just always like to point this out that our schools brought in $1.1 million in cash and checks last year. This is, that's why it's such a huge focal point for KDE and for us because that's where the highest risk of fraud potentially is.
Wow.
And it's a lot of money.
Yeah, that's a little surprising.
And that's probably down for most years because you guys weren't there for two months. Pages 73 and 74 offer you detail of the student activity funds. 73 is a summary for each school. Shows you your total revenues and expenses for each school. And then pages 74 through 76 offer you a, an activity level detail for each activity fund at each high school. We knew East Jessman High, West Jessman High, and the Providence School will require to show the detail of those. Pages 77 through 79 are the schedule of expenditures, federal awards. On page 77, you'll see at the very bottom, there's ESER funds. That's your CARES money that was spent before June 30, 2020. We believe on the final version of the audit that will be submitted to KDE, we're going to have to change that from ESER funds to COVID-19 funds. And that is what we're waiting on the federal government to release its final guidance on, on that, on those funds. We don't believe it's going to affect anything else. Page 86. Page 86 lists any findings we have at a federal or state level. For this year, we don't have any, any findings. Page 87 lists the two findings that we had in the prior year. Both of these findings were corrected this year. And then pages 89 through 93 reflect the management comments with regards to board and student activity funds. You'll see Brookside had a comment with regards to some post-dated purchase orders. The Career and Technology Center had a comment regarding multiple receipt forms not being signed by students. And they are required to do that for any student that is older than elementary school. And then the Early Learning Village did not have all the PTO information that was required to be turned in. Starting on page 91 is the status of the prior year comments that we had. All those comments were corrected during this year, except for the comment at the Career and Technology Center. Last year, we had a similar comment where the multiple receipt forms also were not being signed by the students.
So for the student activity accounts, I just want to say thank you to all of you guys. Or not thank you, but basically, the schools are doing a great job. They only have three findings. And a lot of the bookkeepers take it to heart when they have these. Some of them are out of their control, like the Village. They've got a PTO that's constantly changing, and I know Lisa really took it to heart that she had that. We've taken steps and talked with all three of those schools, with the principal and the bookkeeper to correct these. And then the one that was a repeat finding, we are going to be going over there monthly to review their multiple receipts to make sure that they're in compliance. And that's something I've asked Tammy to go over there and double check. But to only have three is impressive.
With an organization of this size especially, and yeah, that, I think everyone's done a good job of making sure they're following the processes like they're supposed to.
Means there's probably some good oversight, Jason.
Well, it's all due to Tammy and my office. I know they provide a lot of support to the bookkeepers and a lot of training. So it's, it's all there.
We're doing a lot of work to do online payments this year also, so that should help mitigate some of these circumstances about having students sign for their payments and things. So I've been doing a lot of work with all the schools. We're trying to accept as much money as possible online this year.
Thank you, Tammy. That is all I have for the audit report. The only other thing I want to mention is, I don't even know if Jason has it yet, but when the audit finally gets released, we'll send over a governance letter. And what this is, this is a letter that's required to be provided to each board member. It outlines any issues we may have or any other further comments. And it also outlines any journal entries that we had to propose that were material. We don't have any comments. We don't have, we didn't have any issues during the audit. And all that will be outlined in the letter. We were just, we're required to provide it to each board member.
Do you want to have any questions for Ryan or for me? Appreciate it. Thank you, Ryan, for presenting, and thank you, Tammy. All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Stephen, we have about five minutes before we transition into the board meeting. So like I said, for the COVID topic, I think I can cover it during the superintendent's report. So are you profitable if we just open the rest for agenda review?
Yeah, that's fine with me. It is with everybody else.
This is just a general question about the audit. And I don't know how many people are from the community are listening tonight, but do we in any way advertise that we're going to be reviewing the financial audit for the community before work sessions?
So, well, as I said, the only thing that goes out is the agenda that's sent out to everybody. And then, once this is approved by you all, I will put it on the website. If it's on the finance page, I don't advertise that it's on there. We could put it out on paper if you guys approve.
I guess I just wondered how many people in the community actually... I don't want to say actually care, but would chime in if they were more aware that it was being discussed. I mean, in my mind, this is something that the community would be proud to hear and relieved to hear.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll put it up on the website, and if you, if you want me to, I'm more than welcome to advertise it and say, check it out here. Or we could even put it on Facebook, but...
I was going to say, it could be an opportunity because I know some of the state or some of our local governmental organizations report some of that information out in the Jessman Journal too, so that could be an option.
Any of those options, Jason. I, I think it'd be a good idea to publicize it a little more, maybe. Thank you. I have enough to do.
Are there any questions on anything in the agenda? I will tell you while you're looking, there is going to be a construction update, and that document is under supporting documents, and it's dated. So when we start covering that, that's the only thing that's not on, on that same list of documents.
Is it just Steve and I tonight?
Bobby's here. I think Debbie's going to be a few minutes late, and Amy isn't going to make it.
Right.
I'm on.
Okay. Anyone checked our COVID numbers?
I didn't look today. I saw the state was 20 some odd hundred. Looks like we had 28 new today, and we are sitting at 328 active. The number I keep going back to is when we were monitoring this closely during the month of August and into September, that active number was somewhere between 20 and 40 most days. You know, you'd get a few new, but you'd get a few that would come off and be recovered. So the number was kind of bouncing between 20 and 40, 20 and 50, and now we're at 328 active right now, so... All right, let's go ahead and get started here, guys. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting, regular November meeting of the Jessman County Board of Education. Due to COVID-19 and the rising cases in Jessman County, we're holding this meeting virtually. Mr. Moore, would you like to go ahead and call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Board Chair, Stephen Scrivver.
Present.
Vice Chair, Denise Adams.
Present.
Bobby Welch.
Here.
Deborah Hood. Amy Day.
I do know Amy is gonna miss the meeting tonight. Um, Debbie should be here in a few moments. So, uh, hopefully she, she logs on here in just a minute or two and, um, update the, the roll call to reflect her status.
Okay, and we do have three presidents, so we have a quorum.
Good deal. Uh, why don't we go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance, even though it's difficult to do virtually? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Alright, Jessman County Schools exist to motivate and challenge every child every day to be a caring, responsible citizen and a high-level thinker, performer, communicator, and woman for life. Uh, let that mission statement, uh, stay with us and help guide our decisions this evening. Um, we've all had a chance to look over the agenda. Do we have any suggested changes or needed revisions to it tonight?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as is.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Alright, item D, the board meeting minutes, uh, from October the twenty-sixth. Um, we've all had a chance to review them. Are there any revisions needed to those? Do we have a motion to approve those board meeting minutes?
Make a motion. Take my motion and I'll second.
Alright, sounds good. Bobby, uh, makes the motion. Denise will second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Alright, Mr. Moore, into the communications section, construction update.
Yes, sir. Uh, we do have a construction update and like I said, you can find that in your supplemental documents. And that's gonna be covered tonight by Valvolusian.
Okay.
Alright, there is a document that Margie Jacobs provided from J H Jacob, Arkansas, as far as the CTE project. Uh, wanna cover real quickly some of the things that happened in the last thirty days. Um, if you've not been out to West High recently, the old car vehicle exit has now been removed. And we are now using the new one that has been installed. And we finally got permission from the, um, Department of Transportation to use that particular exit. I haven't had an opportunity to talk with the school since that has only been in operation for a few days while we were actually in school, um, to know how well it's going, but I'm sure it's working a lot better than it had been before. Um, punch list items are ninety-eight, ninety-eight percent complete at both West High and the old Phase Three A part, as well as, as well as the entry admin kitchen renovations. We're just down to a handful of items that still need to be done. JCTC West Phase Four renovation work. This is the final part of the West, this is the final phase, um, at West Jessman High School, which includes a lot of the ag areas. We're about ninety-five percent complete on all of that. We'll let you know that we will be moving new furniture in the week after, thank, next week. We'll start putting new furniture in and the week following, which will be the week of December seventh, we will start moving teachers from JCTC and the ag department over to West Jessman High School, which is our final move of teachers to our satellite, um, schools. So that's an exciting thing. If you work to be completed, finishing up that work there at West High, as well as the greenhouse has a few items yet to still be done. On the interior, the exterior does have the new finish on the outside. Um, there are some plumbing fixtures, some chain link fencing around the dog kennels for the Vet Tech area. They did a roof warranty inspection this afternoon, um, actually early this morning. Um, the trailer, the construction trailer will be removed very soon, as well as the construction signs. So that's always the final thing to go, that you go, ooh, we're almost at the end of this project. And as I mentioned, furniture installation will begin next week, followed by the move. JCTC, the final phase, will begin that same week of December seventh. Once we get the teachers moved over to West Jessman High School, we'll begin to do the work in the biomedical area, um, which was part of what is currently the ag area, as well as a career, um, offices, the career, um, upstairs, a space for counseling type of activity there, with the anticipation that all of that work will complete by spring break, which is before even when that phase was actually supposed to start to begin. So if you, if you get an opportunity, make sure you look at the different pictures that are in the back, which show, shows a lot from the West Jessman High School ag area. If you ever did any work back in the old ag shop, you really wanna make sure you look at one of the pictures there because you won't even know that it was the same space. So, um, does anybody have any questions for me?
No questions.
No, that's a good update, Ryan. I really appreciate all the detail and all your work, uh, going through this process.
This has been a great project to be a part of, and I will honestly say it's been one of the positives of COVID, is being able to get ahead in this particular one. And if, if that's the only thing that we can say COVID has done well for us, then I'm willing to take that.
And I know we've spoken about this before. We're eager to do a dedication for all these facilities so we can get our community in to get to experience what our students are getting to work in.
And then Matt, would you like me to give a Rosenmull update?
Sure, that'd be great.
So, uh, tonight on the agenda for Rosenmull's renovation, uh, there's proposals that we received for, uh, geotechnical surveys. Uh, we received three of those. Um, that's the next step. Uh, we continue to, um, meet weekly with Margie, um, Joe and Maggie, um, to plan. Coming up, she's hoping to have final drawings, um, to you guys for approval. And then hopefully we can go out to bid in early spring. Uh, but that's where we are currently. And I don't have a pretty report.
Good deal. Um, Matt, was Randy joining us tonight?
I know, but he shared some information with me that I can cover.
Okay, good deal.
Okay, uh, he did, uh, give me the, uh, uh, latest figures that had been calculated at about four o'clock today. And this, uh, November twenty-second, the, uh, daily, uh, rate in Jessman County was, uh, fifty-one point seven-four. And that's very close in line with how the state had rated us, which was right at fifty-two. And, uh, as we look at the seven-day rolling average in Jessman County, they had us at fifty-five point, the health department had it as at fifty-five point nine-six. And, uh, another piece of, uh, data that he had shared, just the weekly data, has the last, uh, seven weeks being, uh, the largest numbers that Jessman County's experienced. And those have, uh, progressively moved upward with, uh, the week before last, uh, Jessman County having a hundred and eighty cases. And then last week, we had two hundred and twelve cases.
Definitely not moving in the right direction, that's for sure. Uh, before we began the board meeting, I was noting to other board members that, you know, after we made the difficult decision in early August to delay the start of in-person school by two weeks, um, you know, I, like many others, was looking at our daily numbers, uh, or looking at our numbers on a daily basis to see what we were, you know, how many new cases we were adding and, and more importantly, how many active cases we had. And while we were adding, we went from adding one, two, three new cases a day to adding up into double digits. Our active case count was consistently hovering between twenty and forty, twenty and fifty. Uh, and the new number today shows we've got three hundred and twenty-eight active cases, so, um, definitely not going the way we, we hoped to be. So, um, hopefully people will continue to do what they can to be compliant with recommendations and wearing a mask and, and trying to physically distance as most as possible, so.
Absolutely. And if you look at the, uh, state map, I haven't seen today's, but yesterday's had all but three counties in a red status.
Yeah, it's, it's tough. Um, Mr. Moore, anything, uh, what have you got for us in your report?
Yeah, uh, I was gonna go ahead and give you some additional information related to COVID. If I can drill down into a little bit of data for you, uh, that is specific to Jessman County Schools. Uh, two weeks ago, uh, we had, uh, twelve positive, uh, cases in Jessman County for our students. Uh, four of those were students that are, uh, learning virtually. Uh, last week, we had six students that tested positive. Three of those are in virtual program. And starting this week, we've identified four students that have tested positive with one of those students being in our virtual academy. And then if I could go back a couple of weeks with student data as well. Uh, two weeks ago, uh, we had to quarantine, meet, to meet the, uh, uh, guidelines specified by the health department. I had to quarantine ninety-seven students. And then last week, we had twenty-one, and, uh, this week we have twenty-seven so far. And then with our staff, which I know it's, uh, important to you guys to, uh, hear how many staff we don't have available, uh, uh, to, uh, serve our students and meet the responsibilities for the November eighth through fourteenth week. We had thirty-five staff members, uh, quarantined, four who had tested positive. Uh, last week, we had thirty-six in the same situation. And so far this week, we have twenty staff members, uh, that aren't available and four of those have tested positive. And if I could just give you, uh, a little bit of an overview, just make sure there aren't any questions. I've sent this information out to, uh, staff, to the board, uh, members and, uh, uh, the people in our, our community. But I just wanted to make sure there weren't any questions, but, uh, per the governor's executive order, uh, our middle schools and high schools will be learning virtually through January fourth. Our elementary students are in the same, uh, situation as our secondary, uh, students. But if, uh, Jessman County, uh, is moved out of the red status, then we have the opportunity to return to in-person starting December seventh. And, uh, that's, uh, viewed typically on Thursdays at four o'clock is how they're, uh, gauging that. And then, uh, we have gone ahead, uh, and closed, uh, our schools and offices to visitors. So, uh, we are opening the doors for, uh, scheduled appointments. And then for athletics, we have, uh, no practices for our, uh, winter sports until December fourteenth. And again, those are the, uh, recommendations from the Kentucky High School Athletic Association. And we will resume, uh, uh, competitive, uh, competitions on, uh, January fourth. And, uh, we'll get more guy, uh, guidance on what the practices will look like when we return, uh, December fourteenth. We'll get more guidance from, uh, the Kentucky High School Athletic Association. And then another piece of information that has been communicated, uh, by the governor, and it's definitely the case in Jessman County, is that, uh, our health department, uh, due to, to the volume of cases, has now just started reporting, uh, uh, are contacting the individuals who have tested positive and they're not, not as involved in the contact tracing process like they've been in the past. And the only other thing I was gonna report out to, uh, the board, are there any questions on any of that information I shared?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, the only other thing that I wanted to report out, and you guys received, uh, this information, uh, two weeks ago, uh, during our work session, but I just wanted to share it publicly because I know this is something that, uh, we've all been focused on and concerned about, and that's the performance of our students. Uh, uh, while they've been, uh, uh, moving back and forth, uh, into the different modes of instruction this year, uh, we conducted the, uh, national assessment that is called I Ready. And the data that, um, uh, we gathered from that was, uh, extremely promising, uh, for our, uh, students in grades, kindergarten through eighth grade, uh, we were performing, Jessman County was, uh, outperforming, uh, uh, the national data by thirteen percent. And for our students, um, in reading, it was by fifteen percent. So I just really wanted to share that, uh, and obviously we still have students that are struggling academically, but we're also seeing a lot of successes. And I think it is important to, uh, just take a moment to thank all of our teachers, to thank all of our administrators, all of our parent professionals that are working directly with our students on their academics, because, uh, it truly has made a difference. And as we're, uh, starting to see some of this data, I, I hope that, uh, they can appreciate that they are making a difference during these challenging times. So I just wanted to share that out, uh, with the board again.
Appreciate it. Any board members have comments on that?
I have one comment. Uh, I'd also like to thank the central office staff and the support staff, um, around the district. I've, I've heard from several teachers about, um, uh, our finance director and other people showing up to help serve lunch and, and do those kinds of things so that teachers get a bit of a break. Uh, I know teachers aren't getting all the time that they need to plan during the school day. But just the, to, to have, uh, to have your folks from central office show up to, 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 uh, help serve lunch and, and do those kinds of things are, I'm sure, have to be deeply appreciated by the people on the front lines.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, I, I second what Denise said there for sure. Um, anything else, Mr. Moore?
No, sir.
Alright, any board members have comments, um, or anything to communicate at this time?
No.
Nope.
Alright, um, this brings us to our consent agenda. We've got twenty-four items on here. Um, and do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Moore or his team, uh, on any of these items before we, we look at approving the consent agenda?
Uh, very quickly, I'll say a big thanks to, uh, several community partners who have donated money to Jessman County Schools. The, uh, health department donated six thousand dollars to help with social emotional learning, uh, specifically for sources of strength and second steps implementation. Uh, we also had PNC, uh, we received a grant from PNC for seven thousand five hundred dollars, which is supporting, uh, literacy for our students. Uh, we, uh, also received from, uh, Brothers Run Foundation fifteen hundred dollars for our sources of strength at the middle schools.
Good deal. Alright, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make the motion to approve our consent agenda.
Alright, I'll second it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Alright, brings us to the action items. Uh, Mr. Moore, I know Jason covered a little bit of item one. Is there anything to add to, uh, item G one?
No, sir. We went through the bidding process and, uh, Ellie Griggs, uh, is the one that, um, received the, the, uh, bid, so it's my recommendation that, uh, you approve, uh, this bid as submitted.
Alright, uh, any comments or questions from the board?
No.
Motion to approve G one?
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Alright, item G two, G two, Mr. Moore?
Uh, yes, this is the finance audit, uh, or the financial report, uh, for the fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty. And, uh, the documents were provided to you guys. I don't know if Jason, if you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Uh, these are the, this is our annual financial report and balance sheet for the year. The company G three, which is the audit and financial statements that Ryan just went over. Um, these are the actual documents that I'll upload to KDE. Um, but everything that Ryan's gone over has basically, um, been touched on within these documents.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, so it is my recommendation that you approve the annual financial report and the balance sheet report for fiscal year twenty twenty.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve item G two?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Say no? Alright, item G three, Mr. Moore?
Uh, yes, this is the audit that was covered during the work session. And, uh, it's my recommendation that you approve the, uh, audit financial statements and supplemental schedules for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Alright, questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Sounds like Debbie Hood is. Sounds like Debbie Hood is in here now. Thank you, Debbie. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right, item G4, Mr. Moore?
This is a first reading for the revision of policy 08.221, and it's our grading policy. And this is specific to our AP and dual credits, and this does make it easier for families to understand the amount awarded per class for keys dollars, and it also gives some weight to our advanced classes, which will encourage students to participate hopefully more frequently in those classes. Michelle, anything you wanna add?
Michelle, is your volume all the way up? All right, we've lost Michelle. Do any board members have?
I'm here, I'm here, it's fine. Yes, sorry, sorry. I was saying it's all good. He said everything that needs to be said.
Okay, good. Any questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, do we have a motion to approve item G4?
Make a motion we approve item G4.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right, Mr. Moore, item G5?
Yes, this is an action that we took with the board chair's permission, because we were in such a critical situation a couple weeks ago with finding substitute teachers, and it is a formal request to allow us to change the daily rate, increasing it by fifty dollars per day for our substitute teachers. So it's my recommendation that we change the certified salary schedule indicated above for substitute teachers and make it effective July 1, 2020.
All right, questions or comments from the board?
Do we have more substitutes stepping forward since we've done that?
Yeah, Debbie, I don't have an exact count, but, and Michelle, if you have other numbers, by all means do, but I was aware of people that had just reached out to me, or that I've heard of, there were twelve within the first week, and that's made a major difference.
Matt, part of this, this policy change, we discussed a few weeks ago about this being a possibility and that if those substitutes were to contract COVID, that they were gonna be compensated for that well, is that gonna be covered in this policy change?
Yes, sir, so if they do have, and we were just gonna make that our practice, so it's not connected to this policy, but we were gonna make that our procedurals, our operation, and we've already communicated that to substitutes as well. So if we do have somebody that comes into sub, and because of that, you know, if they're in contact with students or a staff member, and they're required to quarantine or test positive, then we're gonna continue to pay them until they're able to return.
How much is that pay right now for subs?
I think it's like one thirty-five to, it's on the schedule, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Don't have them both open at the same time.
Yeah, I don't have it either. Let me see.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so it moves it to one, between one sixty-five and one eighty-five.
Okay.
And you all were asking about quarantines and things, and that definitely was something that we actually sent that out as an email blast to all of our subs and all of our current and former subs to let them know, so they would feel more comfortable, because a lot of subs that had signed back up were still just saying no, they weren't sure, and so this seemed to help get more people activated, for sure.
Good deal.
On any given day, do we have classrooms that aren't covered?
Yes, but of course, and of course, then we went back to virtual, so it's been kind of hard to get a really good gauge, but it did make a difference. And we have quite a few really, really strong subs that are working now as virtual subs as well. It's been really helpful, so. And again, I just think it's helpful for them to know that, you know, we're being competitive with our surrounding counties during this time.
Right. All right, motion approved, G5.
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right, final one, Mr. Moore, item G6?
Yes, this is specific to the Human Resources Department, and we are wanting to revise the job description, giving us more flexibility to open that position up, not just to somebody that holds a certification, but somebody that could be employed in a classified status. We feel like this has the potential to give us a broader range of applicants, and then also could potentially be a savings to us. So there's some specific pieces of background information there that I'm sure you've looked at, but it is my recommendation to approve the revised job description as public.
I think this is a very good move.
Yep.
Motion approved, G6?
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right. All right, and we've got two items in a, in closed session this evening. So I'm gonna make the initial motion that we go into closed session under KRS 61.8101B with deliberations on the future acquisition. General state publicity would likely affect the value of a specific piece of property to be acquired for public use. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right, thank you all. Aaron, please let us know when we're clear.